Order at. Thank you, everyone for coming. Commissioner Banks, do you want to lead us?
Father, once again, we come before you to give you thanks and to give you praise and to lift up your most precious name. Father, we pray that you lead us in guidance and direct us in the way that we should go, continuously bless each family that are represented here in our community. We ask this in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, we're all here today. Thank you. Everyone's present here. We're here to sit down and talk about the Masonic Lodge. Do you want to say, Charles, you want to start us off a little bit with this?
Sure. First of all, I'm excited. We've gotten this far and we're looking at doing something with the building and working with concerned citizens. And I really see this works out really kind of as the first step. There's probably a lot of steps to go. We need a lot more information. Or you all need a lot of information in terms of cost of renovation of the building and so forth. I just hope we can continue to move forward as we gather that information and keep the process moving forward towards an agreement. And we'll have to craft something at some point. So I'm excited to get started. I think hopefully this will be the beginning of a process to end up with a good fruitful use of that build.
I think we've got, do you want to introduce yourself and kind of where you are in this process, your position, your role in the process? We'll start with you, Mr. Blue.
Okay. Name is Derek Blue. Born in Palatka, raised in Crescent City, moved away to Hillsborough County. Got into a lot of economic development, CRA work, a little bit of historic work out just down south. And this, most of these ladies and people here probably know me since I was a kid. But I've been working with Concerned Citizens just to come back and really support their mission and the vision here in the community. Because I love Crescent City and I know what it can be. So I'm working alongside them as a whatever I need to be. But I guess as a consultant right now to really, really assist them and help push this project and perhaps others through.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Patricia Lavelle. I am a retired teacher of the Putnam County system for 42 years. I started out as a physical education teacher, science, social studies, ended up being athletic director and dean of students at Crescent City High School. I've only worked in Crescent City in my 42 years. I've never been in another school system. I had lots of experience with budgeting with the athletic department and being team leader of the sixth grade team at middle school when I was down there. I am a devout Christian. I'm a Free Will Baptist. I work in my national church. I work in my local church and I work in my general conference. I work from, I'm on the National Financial Board. I'm on the financial board at my general church. And I am the trustee, one of the trustees at my church. So I've been in quite a few projects over the years in various positions.
Thank you. My name is Veronica Glover and like Derek, I was born in Palatka, wish I could have been born in Crescent City. But we're here educated in the South Putnam School District. Graduated with a business degree, never really used it, never thought I would be teaching. But I have been in the field of education for over 22 years. And I love it and it's a place where I'm going to retire from. Set on different boards in the community, currently a member of the planning and zoning board here in Crescent City. The president of Concerned Citizens of South Putnam, always been active in this community ever since I was a little girl. Before I really, really understood the process of really taking stock in your community. I just did what I was asked. I remember when Andy Nixon was running. I campaigned for him, running around flyers and all of that good stuff. And but I guess this is the role that it was taking me to be active and making, bringing changes and making a difference in the community. I'm a mother of four sons, married, and I love this community.
We're going to try to keep this very casual tonight, just kind of kicking this off as far as where we can go from here. And so I know you've got other members that are here. So if one wants to tap in, by all means, you know, just go ahead and do that. Is that good?
That's good.
Okay. Do you want to start off and just kind of share with us, share with us your vision? I'd like to, I think we really want to hear just your vision of what you see over there. Because I think with all of us, we all, you know, we have visions of things the way we see it. What is your vision?
Well, part of it is, the biggest hurdle is that the Masonic Lodge has been in the community for a very long, long time. And before I really knew who I was. So ever since I've been running the streets of Crescent City, it's been the Masonic Lodge. Actually, one of my relatives was one of the first Wishful Masters in, over there. And I later learned that my grandfather actually was the secretary. So I have a lot of members of my family who have been a part of the organization. As a child, I can remember attending weddings, on parties, birthday parties, and different events at the Masonic Lodge. So it has serviced the community for a very, very long time. And we would like to continue to do that through the work that the Concerned Citizens of South Putnam have done in the past. So we would like to continue to be a resource to the community, extending that to different programs for the community, educating people on the different things that we have going on. Continue to, I work with the city to do whatever it takes to make Crescent City the place that it can be and that many of us have long lived for and hoped for.
Now, what's your vision?
My, my husband was the Wishful Master before his passing. He was a Wishful Master. I am a member of the Eastern Star, so I have been up in that building many times in various meetings. My vision, I think all of my vision is that that building becoming a resource center for the community at large. And that offering programs in education, financial wise, health wise, literacy wise. And also I have looked for special occasions. If there's an occasion that's going on in the building is conducive for that group of people that they can rent or pay a donation to have their program or their activity there. Also seeing the building as a place, an office space for maybe for someone. That need, that doesn't need a big office space, but an office space that they might be able to run a business out of. I can see the building being useful and productive to the community at large. Now, at this time, if it's with you all, this is our consultant, as we told you, Mr. Derek. And so he has a presentation and he wants to.
I can try to talk through.
Okay.
Because it's more so like a supplement. I'm sure you guys have some questions from the original, from the original RFP response. So more so of that. And then as you guys mentioned, just, you know, some more conversational, maybe even, you know, we can answer some questions and get some clarity on both sides. And I'm here to, you know, just really to support the efforts. It is a historical building. I think I saw in the 1889. And I think, you know, we start talking about, you know, social return on investment here in this community. I think as you can see that that building was, I looked on the wall. Mayor Myers took us over there earlier today and I was just looking at all the people who really contributed to that building, the generations, people who my grandparents and I think it's important for the community that we make something out of that building. Because it's, it's, even when I was a kid, it was a source of just, everybody looked at that building. And that was where anybody who was anybody would be at that particular building. So that being said, you know, we've been looking at some historical preservation grants. There's one, tomorrow is actually the deadline for, you know, one of the larger ones. So obviously, we can't apply now, but we are looking at applying. I believe it opens up April of 23. So we'll, but, but at the same time, we'll be building capacity as an organization. So one of the things that I think that the Concerned Citizens that we needed was a 501(c)(3). So that's been submitted to the IRS and IRS has been kind of funny lately in terms of timelines. So we're kind of at their mercy right now in terms of approval and next steps. But that process is underway and a big part of what our meetings have really been about is how do we build capacity as an organization? So that, you know, we could demonstrate a sustainability as an organization. I think that may have been, been a question. How, how is the organization going to be sustained? How would a project like that be sustained? And the first way is through public-private partnership. You know, you can undertake that as a private organization in Crescent City without, without the assistance of the municipality. And one of the things that we like to do is really, really get the, and I feel like we may have a complete buy-in from the city as this being a partnership, how we go into this building and do what needs to be done. The, the initial RFP was more so just some placeholders in terms of numbers. Obviously, couldn't 65,000 or whatever that number was, it can't do what needs to be done there. But I would like for you kind of to pay attention to the percentages on the top of that budget sheet. Now, one of the reasons why Ms. Lavelle asked or brought this to my attention, one of the reasons why in that budget section, we talked about, we didn't include the historical, the historical grants at this time. Well, one of the reasons why is didn't want to make a promise that we were unlikely to keep. I know in-kind donations and all of that stuff is subjective. However, you know, when we start looking at the political landscape, legislation, appropriation requests, those funds are kind of subjective too at this point. But what our goal is, is just to build some capacity now so that in 2023, fiscal year 2023, 24, we'll be able to go to the table having demonstrated, you know, site control, you know, some financing, have a track record programming. So we can kind of demonstrate that we have cash flow. One of the things with these historical preservation grants is that there has to be matching dollars, you know, and certain percentage of matching dollars per. And I just think that we're in a, we're in a stage of capacity building, but we do have a lot of, it's a lot of potential for us to grow with your support, specifically as Ms. Veronica mentioned. One of the things that we notice here in Crescent City is the need for just programming, need for programming. I think when we start talking about reducing recidivism, being homegrown, you know, it's a revolving door sometimes in the community when we start talking about that. So programs that reduce recidivism, I'd imagine that the city is engaged in some redevelopment activity as well. We talk single-family housing and different things of that nature, you know, that supports that type of development. And what we're trying to do really, really is just put a focus on a restoring a community gym. And then using that, that building for programming, you know, we were able to walk it. The bones are good. They're old bones, but they're good bones inside of that building, really, really is. And a lot of what we would initially try to look at doing was a little bit of demolishing and gutting the interior of that building. So we can really see what we're, what we need to do inside of it.
Okay.
All right. How everybody doing today? Excuse my lateness. I'm at work trying to put out some fires. But I believe, you know, I concur with everything that has been said and have been spoken about, the impact in the community. I mean, I'm born and raised in this community. A lot of you all knew me before I knew myself. I look at Ms. Judy West, how you doing? I didn't see you last time. Past the banks, you know. This is, this is my community. This is an area to where, you know, no matter where you go in life, you want your home to look good. And you want your home to be good. And one of my specialties is programs. And that's what I do in my secular job is I work with an agency called Community Action. And our agency is designed to get out in the community and address some of these issues that's going on in the community. Or, you know, I mean, when you look at Putnam County, and I don't have the stacks in front of me, but we almost at the bottom in every stack. Income, single fam, I mean, single mothers, you know. And though, I mean, you, you pick it, we, we got some areas that we need to work on. And particularly here in South Putnam, you know, South Putnam, more the rural area of Putnam County and also West Putnam. I pretty much worked throughout this whole county, West Putnam, South Putnam and Palatka, of course. But I believe that, you know, having a, having a program or having programs here that will improve the quality of life for Crescent City. And I take it personal because this is where I've been, you know, this is where I was born. And I want to see Crescent City. I want to see the program. I want to see things come together. And I believe that this is a good start, starting something that can be great. Again, I know we have to work through all of the, the, you know, the red tape just to make sure everything is done proper. But I think it's worth it. I think everything that we do is worth it at the end of the day. Just to see families be able to have a quality of life to say, hey, I was able to go there and get this type of education. Or I was able to go there and, you know, improve and buying a home or whatever the case is, whatever programs we decide. I think it's a plus for this, you know, for this part of the city. So that's my, my takeaway.
Commissioners, let's open it up. And I know you all have got a lot of questions. Start, I mean, go through and start asking.
I'll just ask the first question. You know, I was reading the historical context. And basically, it just says here, it's, you know, it's kind of short and sweet. It just says here that the African-American community of the city, it has served this community since the late 1800s. When did it kind of stop serving the community? What, when did it kind of go bad?
Was about 2000 and about 2000.
About 2000?
That was kind of, that was a thought that I had too. I'm glad you asked that. Glad you asked that.
And then just, you know, I had some other questions, but, but, you know, that was, that was my first question. I have a few of them kind of, you know. But I, but I really think that, that, that's my thought process also. You know, I read through your proposal on what you would like to do with the building and it all sounds really good. But, but on the same hand, I was wondering how you were actually going to preserve the fact that it was a Masonic Lodge.
In the upper portion of the building is large enough to include a museum. We, we have there, let me see, tombs. The tombs that the Masons use during their meetings. We also have the actual, the complete entire podium. We have the podiums. We, I have records dating back to the 1800s of that large. I have memo, we have memorabilia, we have pictures, names, that the top, on the top portion of the floor would be like a museum of that.
And because the, the Masonic folk, right, were so secretive, do you have any idea what they did? You know, what, what, what they did for our community, you know, during that time?
Yes.
So you do have a record of that?
Yes. Yes. Yes, we have program. I have programs that during my husband's lifetime, when he was a Wishful Master of them, doing various things. They Saint John's Day, the anniversaries, and we have pictures on, I have pictures of all of that.
Well, that basically.
You were one. Your name's up there on that board.
Yeah, I was part of, and I think now, I'm pretty sure when the lodge start, we did a whole lot of great things in that community. We donated to different organizations, which was active on events. When a lot of the older timers started leaving us, it kind of lost interest. We were looking for another generation to step up. They didn't quite step up. So it went just going down, down, down. And there, I was looking for, we couldn't have Mitch. I can't just stop mentioning his name because he got on me. You know, he sits out to the shopping area out there. He said, what is this about the city going by the lodge? I said, no, we not paying on behind the lodge. But it kind of got on me. So I told him, I said, come to the meeting, come to the meeting. And him and the name I came to mention, they, they came to the meeting. And it kind of put life back in it. Kind of called, all of you know what our focus was because it was going down. And it looked, it kind of was a slow ass. But my, one of my main questions is here is tonight, is tonight, to the rest of colleagues here and all of you, what can the city actually do to help the organization to refurbish this lodge? Make it back active again. There's so many things, so many things in this community that that building can be used for all of us. Not only certain Caucasian, but for everybody. Those that be open, if we can get it back to cooperating. And I took liberty to, I don't want to say my age. But I read over to Palatka, you know, I went to Old Central County. And they had a fight to try to save that building. Now I get beyond repair. I read over there this week. Now it's beyond repair. I I read over there uh this week. And I I could have just stopped in my truck to see it is a condition. So we are blessed that uh the group jumped on it before it got that bad like a central, old central academy.
I was on that board.
Well, just, but you, but you know, if we can get it to operating. And I would like to ask this question to the group. What y'all would want the city to do? I know that they uh it take time to get a grant. But certain things need to be did kind of like immediately. Before it get worse.
So what, have you, have you um, have you reached out to? Other Masonic lodges or, you know, everybody, everybody needs a helping hand. Uh, I mean, are there other? Lodges that, you know?
And to answer to your question, no, we have not reached out to any Masonic lodges yet. We are basically, which is on the ground floor. So first of all, we don't, we don't know whether we're gonna have the building or not to be able to do what we did. We we thought this was our first step, and from this step, we go and we do what we need to do. Now, are we fundraising on ourself on the side? Yes, we are. We are having different fundraisers. Uh, with the uh concerned citizen, because we know that we have to have the finances. We know that they're not, we're not gonna get finances from everyone. We have to get out of work, and we've started our portion of working, getting money. So for, and then, so now we're here trying to, first of all, this is the funding place for us right here, that we feel.
You know, not cutting our grand lorry down, but when we reached out to them, we did. Reach out to them to try to find their ownership. And I don't think it.
We had a hard time.
We had a hard time.
We had a hard time.
I don't think.
We finally just had to kind of go after.
And I, I I wanna say something to the question that Commissioner Burton. Um, when you asked about, we gave that timeline about two thousand when um, when it stopped. Um, one, at the time, um, when we talk about the history of this lodge. Um, that was probably one of the only outside organizations that. Um, blacks in the community actually could go to. That's the only thing that in many communities that they had. Um, to go to. So as time, yeah, and and inside the churches. And so outside of that, as time has gone on, it's more um activities. Uh, more things that you can become involved in, um, because even though I have a history of. Background of family members being a part, I've never been in the organization, never been interested in being in the organization. But I um, um. But the building and the work that was done, it ties into the things that we want to do to service. The community, and that's our main interest of getting it back. And we don't have a building. And we, you know, we've been um in operation since um two thousand and fifteen. And when we get ready to do something, we have to go and, you know, find a place to have our meetings. Or to do the work that we were, um, that we were doing. So it was. You know, when we, it came up and I heard about the building, building, I made some phone calls and I was like. That'd be great. We can restore this building, we can get it back functioning. Um, and to keep the work going, to make the work easier for us, um, to have a building. So people could come to our buildings and to the building and get the help that they need. Because we had to set up meeting days, or we had to run to people's house owns. The last big project that we did with the roofs and the restoring of the homes. And uh, me and Miss Lavelle talked about that, that it. It took us a while to get back right after um having to do all that running and ripping, um, assisting folks. So that.
The reason I ask my second question is I did a little uh look up of um black Masonic lodges. And you, I'm sure you can educate me on this. I, you know, it was a very quick uh look up, uh, but. I wanna say, is it the Prince Hall? The one that really kind of, that that caught my attention was Prince Hall. I was so impressed. I was so impressed with it, and I thought to myself, my gosh, this, this is really a very strong organization.
Yeah, you got it. Really the history behind that.
Yeah, there, there's definitely a lot of history. And I was, and I was extremely impressed with what I read, and I was extremely impressed with the people that belong. Um, a- and so that's why I asked that question. I I didn't want you to think I just kind of pulled it out of the air. Um, I definitely, you know, had had kind of looked that up to to see. Okay, um, the possibilities of where you might be able to get uh some help and some funding and. And uh those organizations seem very, very strong. And and again, like I say, I I was impressed looking at those. So just want you to know, I'm not trying to.
I wanna ask, I do wanna ask this though, because we're with the, we're not looking, you're not looking to reestablish.
No, we, we can't do that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure, because that was never part of my equation that we were reestablishing that. It sounds to me more like the Masons were acting more as as a community. Support, community involvement, community services, when they were, when you were in. In operation and active, and not necessarily just primarily, uh, you know, the Masons.
It was a organization, the organization is still thriving now. But it ain't great as it was, well, when, well, when Mr. Lavelle uh husband was. Uh, Witchman, it 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 wasn't as great. You know, when, when, during the time when he was in, 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 uh, was, you know, it was great. He had a younger generation striving, everybody was anxious to get in it, but everybody couldn't get in it. Or there were certain standards.
Okay, well, that that explains a lot. Yes, sir.
And and also, now, I definitely want us to really make sure we keep in the focus, the focus. The reason, and I'm not saying we're not, but the reason that Concerned Citizens was created from the beginning. Is because on this side of Putnam, there's no resources for our community. We always have to go to Palacka, or we have to try to fight to try to get things on this end, okay? And we wanted to bring a a committee together to help the South Putnam. Um, and and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, everything south of Down Creek Bridge. We we wanted to put some resources together, because some of our families don't have cars to go to Palacka. Or some of our families don't have um the the resources that they need to get things done. So the main purpose of uh coming together with uh Concerned Citizens. Uh, was to bring resources on this end. As Ronnie said, we've been doing this, but we don't have a building. And uh, we have documentation of the things we've done. I I think we have, we um helped revive over eighty, eighty houses. In South Putnam. Um, through the help of some of the community, but we had to get them to come now here. Because if we get the concerned citizens, wouldn't have been, if you will, been the squeaky wheel or making the noise. We wouldn't have had that help, you know. So um, my. Going back to what Pastor Banks asked, or Commissioner Banks, I'm so used to calling him Pastor. Uh, Commissioner Banks saying, what can the city do? Um, we need a place, we need a building. We need a building.
Can I just?
Yeah, go ahead, jump in there.
I think you do need a building, okay? I'm gonna just tell a little story. I didn't grow up with black children. I was in the age in the forties and the fifties when it was segregated, and I did not get to know black children, alrighty. So um, went into education, and my first year of teaching was total liberation, already. Half my class is black and half is white. It's a funny thing. You don't see color, you see kids. I had a little lady come to me, my church, and she says, how are those little black kids? Aren't they just awful? And I thought, no, they're not. What? She said, and walked off. I love our community. I don't care if you're black, white, Asian, whatever. Because we've affirmed through the years, it doesn't matter. You need this place. This is a money pit. You know that, alright? And I do think, I'm gonna throw this at you, and you're gonna wanna shoot me, alright? Just sitting here thinking, and I came in, we we talked this morning. I was just wondering if maybe the city could go ahead and put the roof, a new roof on it. And that's our contribution to help you. Then it's dry. You can put whatever up over the windows and keep it dry, and then we're good. I see in this packet you're asking for, is it ten thousand a year?
Yeah, that's more so for those those program and initiatives.
And I'll tell you why, because everybody else is gonna come and ask for money like that. But while we still own this building, if we could possibly put the roof on it. And then you give us the dollar and it's yours for a while. You see what I'm talking about? Do you understand what I'm talking about? That would be a big start on your project. But I don't see us giving you regular money like that, because. I just don't see the, you know, there are so many needs in our community, and we are the money pit. We're the money pit ourselves, this city is. But I think whether we can, I don't think this is probably right, there's fifteen thousand for the roofing. What do you think?
Yeah, those, those numbers were were placeholders.
I I understand for you to get started.
Roof actually just, I think needs to be repaired. It's, I've, I've crawled on it. It's in good shape. I couldn't get very far, it's very steep.
Yeah.
But it does, it does definitely need to be, it does definitely need to be repaired. It does need to be repaired.
To make sure that it's dry and then uh. Start working on it with, I wanna see you get real money through uh grants and. And go ahead and apply for everything that's out there. And if you need some help or whatever from us to do that, I think that maybe we can do that. Uh, I just wanted to make it plain that the city's going to be limited with money. That's why hadn't, hasn't anything happened with it. Uh, this is going to be several years getting done, but if it's dried in, you can use the building. You know, you can go in and paint walls or whatever. Shoot, I can help you paint, not too high, but.
And I, I I've been piggybacking on, and piggybacking on that, um, I was over there that day. And you worked your heinies off, you know, and I knew that day, that Friday. That you were committed. And you were taking pride in it, and other people were seeing that too. And I'll tell you, when I walked away that afternoon. It was probably one of the best days I've had in Crescent City. Um, just because the work, the pride, the way everybody worked together to try to make that. Clean that building up and show it some love. And at the end of the day, it felt loved. And you could see it was smiling, it was smiling. And today, when we walked through there, there were pennies scattered everywhere, upstairs, everywhere. And I said, we said that, you know, when there's pennies scattered, there's been some good spirits here. Um, and so I see that. There are uh so many grants, so many grants out there. It takes time. It does take time. And um, I I I'm not ready to give up ownership. I don't think that you really want us to give up ownership right now. Uh, I think we need to be partners, if whatever we're going to do is to partner together. To make sure that you have this, this space. Um, as we go forward though, I mean, let's start, let's, let's pretty up the outside. While you're building up what you're gonna do on the inside. Let's start planting some flowers there. Let's paint, let's clean the thing up.
What is your plan? Do you have something that's fair? Can I?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let me finish. Just let me finish. We're gonna go around. I know, well, everybody, everybody can kind of jump in, and that's what we said. Let's all jump in. Nobody's not giving up turns. Um, yeah, I would like to see us right now. I mean, I'd like to see us. Plant some plants out there, clean it up, and make it, just make it look like it's starting to come to life as we explore all the options that you have. Okay, Commissioner Davina, go ahead.
Sure, um. And I um have a lot in agreement with what you and Commissioner West have said. Um, I see this definitely as a public-private partnership. I have said before that I think one of the things the city can do is put the roof on. The public partnership that I see is uh the city, we have the capacity. And we're doing this already through the CRA. Right now, we have some money. Uh, our money is not unlimited, but we have some money, and we have some expertise. And my concern about the building are um. That it's a little premature to turn it over to a group that is trying to build capacity. I don't want y'all to be overwhelmed while you're trying to do that. At the same time. Um, the reason this building was identified for preservation is because of the historic value. It's one of the contributing structures of the historic district. I'm a member of the Putnam. Fruitland Peninsula Historical Society that through Mr. Staggie first identified the building as important to save. And I'll get back to that right now. So um, and to me, the historical aspect of it is very important. Um, my husband and I live in a house that's also a contributing structure for the historic district. And um, we bought it from my uncle. It was built in nineteen twenty-six. And when my grandparents got old and aged, um, the house went into a lot of disrepair. So I know what it's like to have a money pit that needs to be fixed up and. Just besides the money that we need to do it, a concern that I have is that whatever is done with this building. Um, restores it to the condition and the attributes. That, that makes it um a contributing structure. And that goes both for the outside and the inside. So um, to me, if we have an agreement, I mean, I wrote down, I have some notes here, and I'm sorry. Bring them from, for everybody, but I'm I'm a little disorganized. I apologize. I just had a death in the family on. I don't even remember. I thought it was Friday, the mayor told me it was Saturday. Um, but I think the historic preservation aspect needs a written plan that needs to be followed. For example, um, what are the elements of the outside that need to be retained? Um, there's a good example on South Main Street, a little house that was redone. And um, some of us talked to them, and we got them to keep the the doors and the windows. In other words. Um, you can go down South Main Street and look at houses that would be contributing structures. But somebody took out the wrong things and put in the wrong windows. So that goes for the inside. So there's the historic preservation aspect, and I think the city really needs to help with that. Um, as well, you know.
I have a tendency to agree with that. I think the very first place. Okay, just the Fruitland Peninsula, Peninsula Historical Society, and they ought to sit down with you, and that's. Who she's talking about and say what those attributes are that they would like to see kept there. You know, the city can't help you with that, but the historical side society might be able to.
I'm sorry, can I finish, ma'am?
Yeah, yeah, and then Mr. Blue, um, he wants to interject.
I'm probably in line with what you were asking.
Well, my point is that the, I think the city currently is the owner. So I think that it's our responsibility to make sure that there's a plan for this building. That will keep, retain the historic elements. I don't say we have the, and I'm not putting this on Charles and Karen. Uh, obviously, you have to find the resources to do that, but I'm saying, when push comes to shove. If, uh, I don't think that we should just say, let's go fix it up. It, to me, it needs a plan, because it is a contributing. let's go fix it up, it, to me, it needs a plan because it is a contributing structure.
You 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 all are absolutely right about that, one, the good news is uh Florida DEO has a set of standards for historical Department of Economic Opportunities where that funding will come from, they actually have those standards. And uh, we we wanna maintain the, obviously, any historic district, as you mentioned, we wanna maintain character and the integrity of that building, so you you right, know you're right on point with that.
But before we get to historical character and integrity, the the reason all this is really before us now is because, and I'm very concerned about this because I know people are going in and out. Um, the building was actually condemned by the county on February twenty, oh, I put twentieth, it's February twenty-sixth. So, the building was condemned and the city's original plan was to tear it down. It, I've got the letter, I don't know if y'all have it, um, but.
Well, now, people are not going, I mean, it's completely boarded up, it's completely boarded up. Yeah, they used to, but now it's completely boarded up and there's absolutely no sign that people are going in and out of that building.
No, I'm, I know it was boarded up because when we took ownership, I talked to the sheriff and the city manager immediately, um, no, I'm talking about um just, I think there needs to be a plan for who goes in and out, and so basically, um, I looked at your budget, I thought it was um very good and very detailed. Um, but to me, some of the things Charles talked about this being a process. I think I understand what the concerned citizens do in terms of your community activities and benefit you bring to the community. So, um, the money pit question and the sixty-four thousand dollar question is it's great that you wanna take over this building, but this building has been condemned now for two years. And I feel a sense of urgency to stabilize it, make it safe, and then have a good plan for um the historic preservation elements, and I I agree with the mayor and Commissioner West that this is a public-private partnership. Um, I think we need some more detailed plans, and I think to me, I notice you have like certain elements laid out, um, just per se from the city and per se from concerned citizens. But I'm very much in agreement with Commissioner West, I think that the city should um frontload the contribution um and do those things that are necessary, not only to dry it in, but to stabilize it. And then work, I mean, I I think y'all have a good plan, but I think when a building's been condemned for two years, that you need a short-term action plan to make sure, I don't want us to sit here and talk and then, you know, have it turn out that we've waited too long, and that's been my concern for quite a while. So, um, to me, there's taking care of the urgent things, and I know, um Jim, you mentioned having a structural person go in, or, um, I forget, I don't have your
Structural engineer.
Email in front of me.
Structural engineer would be good, I I think a historic preservation architect. I can, I am retired, so so just don't even think about. But for instance, we had, we had a lady speak to us a week, uh, two weeks ago on her last meeting. She lives from the sort of trust, and she happens to be with private firm, I'm just saying there, out there. That person would lead you through a series of steps that would lead to, um you need to think of what would need to be done uh to get the the grant, historic preservation grants. And I would caution you because there are things that, um in order to get that grant, and we're gonna have to restore it properly according to the part service, you know, the uh interior department regulations and guidelines. Um, but if I can keep going for a minute. This building, it represents the oldest African-American organization in the United States. It dates back to seventeen seventy-three when Prince Hall, one man, but tell others, eleven men could not get the United States Masons to allow them. Here's his budding new democracy, and all these white Masons wouldn't let them into their organization, so they went to Ireland, and then they went to England, and the English finally, in English we fought, finally let them in, that was back in seventeen seventy-three. Now, in eighteen eighty-five, twenty years after the Civil War, this organization that has tremendous ideals about how to bring black folks up from some of the challenges they've been dealt. And one of the things is the stairway, I can see it, the stairway up, and there's this city on the hill, and this, from eighteen eighty-five, this organization has been there, now they started meeting at the Otfevilles' home, I don't house, I don't know where that Otfevilles' building is, but somewhere in this place, and then in nineteen fifty-one, they moved into here. That was when it was moved back by the goutiers because of the expansion of this road. The one we're sitting on. So it's not, it's not the fact that this goes all the way back to nineteen oh five, which is the age of the building. But it's the fact that this organization, and we can tie it to this building, is so important, and not only that, but I I see it as an incubator for a whole bunch of things, what was, what was Main Street, it was the center of the black community that had a little bit of commerce going on around it, had a barber shop, it had some things happening, there's no black, there's no black businesses in this town right now. Why not use it to start spinning coming out of it?
Okay, okay, everybody, okay, okay, let's, let's, let's.
Down here across from this, from this hall, I was born and raised in that house, I still stand there today.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, go ahead, introduce yourself, just so Karen's got it for the record, please.
Emily Evans, Jr.
Thank you.
And that house right there, across from Mason, I was born and raised in that house seventy-two years ago. Had a lot of activity to step on, but just to put a spin on what you're saying. There was no barber shop, it was down on Main Street, there was three barber shop down there. There was three barber shops, there was uh six joke joints, as we used to call them. There was, it, that place was full of people down there, both streets over, all the way over to the lake on uh over there and everything, black people owned and all that, and it was flourishing, a lot of business. People was picking through, and uh it was a lot of money, a lot of money in Crescent City, and the organization, uh, my dad was in the organization. Banks and all them in the organization, I come from Vietnam and everything, uh, they wouldn't let me in the organization. That's the kind of people they were, because what they were, they had a standard of person that you had to be, you had to be a certain person in order to get in that organization, and I wasn't. I wasn't one of that. So, that was a great organization, still a great organization, my uncles, I had uncles, my dad and all of them was in that organization, they tried to get me in, but I couldn't get in.
Can I say this quick?
Yes, sir.
Two points, so we can move on with that. Now, when that large uh first got situated, I'm not talking about that large, but organized in Crescent City, there was a black school on Lion Street called the Potbelly School, Potbelly had a potbelly stove in it, heater for the people to heat, and it burned the building down. That's where we got to Milton out here. That's where we came from, down there, the large act participated out there, the original large, that way it got started, out there. Now, that bit of law really got started. Now, since we got a little history, I wanna find out from our attorney, from our city attorney. Uh, I would like him to speak to the matter of, called If You Notice, and I'm a news person, I listen and I read the newspaper, I love CNN, but I wanna talk about the legality of it, of of the whole thing, what the city can do and what we cannot do. I think we need to be on track, that what what we can do, even as owners of to do to be able to present it back to the law.
So I was making sure that we were not going in the Mason direction with with, as we were doing this, it was more for the community, so Bobby, do you wanna speak to?
To give it back to the law?
No, 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 right now as a partnership. Pull a chair up here, nah, I didn't say pull a comfortable chair.
So I do think there's several options, um, I think the city could lease it to the group, my only concern with that is um, I think y'all may need ownership for some of the grants, have y'all run into anything?
That was my, and that was, and I I wasn't trying to cut cut you off, I mean, I, we we
Understanding at the beginning when we started this process that we had to be in ownership of it, yes.
We we have to demonstrate site control for certain um, certain grants, I mean, we have been involved with with developments to where they were long-term type leases that uh you know, that that could have worked, but I was looking at the preservation grant, um, a while ago, one of them, the one that I backed up in April. I think uh it's a lot easier if you have site control, you ownership, but it's possible if it's a lease, and then obviously we need letters of support and all that good stuff from the city, but I'm still kind of researching that out at on the state level.
And there's all, I mean, we could, there's obviously the lease, there's just deeding the, our interest in the property over to the concerned citizens, and then obviously there's, we can deed it over to them with restrictions that so long as it's used as a community center by the concerned citizens of South Putnam, you'll have ownership and to eternity, but if it ever became something else, um, then it can revert back to the city, um, I mean, there there, there's a ton of options. Um, I think we just need to explore what's in our best interest and then what also helps them so they'll be able to succeed, give them the tools that they need to succeed, so we.
But I think if you just make it a city community center and you don't attach the historical piece to it, would that uh make it not so that we get the historical grants?
Yeah, you have to attach to the story.
See what I mean, so it, so I I don't think that it can just be a community center for the city. Uh, you also have to attach that historical piece to it in order to get those grants, and there's a lot of money for those grants, there really is, I hate hate to see them go by the wayside.
But a lot of it, though, is the African-American, I mean, a lot of this is the basis too with the grants, to see the African-American and not necessarily the historical, it's just for the African-American community and what's going on in helping to build up that community, so that's something else to look at, yes, Commissioner Davina.
There is two different, yes, the African-American grant and then it's the historical. And more money is in that historical.
It is up to five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just thought, there's a variety of grants, one thing I think that we need is to have a spreadsheet of grants and see which one is the best, I know there's a federal grant, I gave the information to Pat, I think, a while back. Um, there's a federal grant from the Department of the Interior. There are grants that are specifically for African-American cultural sites.
Yes.
And some of them require ownership and some of them don't. But, and again, um, to me, this, this seems a good time. Well, a couple of things that we've mentioned also, one thing that I thought that needs some definition in the proposal is, and this will come on time, I think, but to really look critically at what we want to use the building for, because we've heard a variety of uses, and they can't all, they can't all happen, some of them, some of them can and some of them can't. Um, and a couple of things that would go into that would be, um, number one, zoning, I think right now. Right, I think the building itself, I don't even know what the building sounds, but the other, the other things that I think will impact what the building can be used for ultimately is parking, and uh but
That commercial has.
That's because it's a small slot. But so, but zoning can always be solved, I mean, it's in a, um, it's it's in a very flexible area. Um, but I think parking is there, the size of the building, I think it's three thousand square feet. Um, but I think to me, this is the time, um I think to flesh out the partnership idea. Um, I'm, I'm with Commissioner West, I don't think we can just give the building away for a variety of reasons, I think we wanna make sure that everything is in place to protect it, but I also think that it's going to take the partnership just to do what I said before, to make sure that by the time you get the grants to do the programming, that we have saved the building. And to me, that is, that's part A, is saving the building. Because if you don't do that, then it's not going to be there to be used.
I had a quick question for you, Commissioner, due to what what your concerns, is is the concern liability on the part of the city?
For.
In terms of giving complete site control over to the citizens?
No, um, it's, I mean, it's a whole combination of things, but it's what I said before, I think that right now, we own the building, I think we should be good stewards of the building, I don't think that we need to um turn it over without you guys being ready to receive it. And also to make sure, um that our training.
They're planning to do anything with the building prior to the citizens?
Well, no, but I think, I think, let me, let me ask you this, though, when you're talking about, because site control, when you're saying site control, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that we're going to allow you to go in there and we're gonna, you're gonna come up with a plan, and you're gonna go in there and you're gonna implement it, and and that should give you full site control, we're not gonna be over there doing that with you, we'll be here, we're gonna maintain ownership, when you're talking about site control, what are you talking about?
What I mean, for for instance, uh, I'll just give an example of something, and it and it varies funding source by funding source or or banking, like, uh, we we do work in another municipality and we're developing a lot, that's about an acre, we're developing a mixed-use apartment right in a CRA.
Okay.
Uh, and in order for us to really, and we're getting some funding, some layer of funding, in order for us to do that, we need to demonstrate site control, what I mean by that is we have to be able to demonstrate that it's something that we actually can legally build on. Um, that that we own it essentially, or again, and there's not, out of my, it's a lot of different ways to accomplish that.
Yeah.
Uh, the cleanest, obviously, is ownership, but there's, I've seen thirty-year land leases, I've seen all of that type of stuff to where uh condominiums will build in CRAs using that concept, so it's a lot of ways to do that. Obviously, the cleanness is ownership, but there are different ways that we could accomplish that, but I, I like the the attorney pickings, uh.
Can the city actually hold a mortgage on it? No, I'm just asking.
In what?
On the, you know, you sell it.
So, so we would be the, we would be the seller, we would hold their mortgage, so rather is that what you're talking about?
I mean, it'd be just like me buying a house. Okay, I would buy the house and of course the bank has the mortgage.
And we would hold the note, is what she said, is that what you're asking?
Commissioner uh West presented earlier. You know, that the city has, you know, keep the ownership until we get this thing dried in and like it need to be. And and then, then we need to, you know, there, then we need to, you know, let's them do what they, that that the city helps do what they can do while they own it. And then you know, we go to the next step.
Hang on just just a second, because to me, there's an opportunity here, I don't think either organization, either the municipal organization or the nonprofit organization has all the resources needed to do even step one, which is saving the building. I think this is a place where we can work together. The city can provide some money, the city can help get contractors. Um, but as well, I think we're gonna need, just like you did with the cleanup of the outside, I think we're going to need as much um donations and as much, um, for you, just monetary donations, donations, work and materials and all that kind of thing. So to me, I think the partnership starts it immediately with with immediate repair. So to me, I think the partnership starts immediately with with immediate, um, repair of the building. And then we we go from, we go from there.
Yeah, we got a short, I mean, with the roof, I think that's where we start. It's like Commissioner West said. Before you do, before you do, before you go anywhere, you have to have a plan. You always have to have a plan. No matter what you do, you have to have a plan. You, you've given us, and I know you've put a lot of work into this. And we all know sixty-six thousand is not going to restore that building. We're probably a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand maybe to restore that building upwards of that. Especially today. But you gotta have to have a plan and you're going to have to have a captain of that plan. And so for me, that's where you, you, you have someone in charge that comes in that you can look to as your contractor. To say, this is what needs to be done to this building and kind of guides that ship. And then everybody else is, they're approved, they're the crew. Um, but you've got, you got to have, you have to have that.
Well, what we, what we do have inside of that is is a timeline of activities. One is making a general assessment of the building, because we really don't know until we start peeling back layers. And it's in your plan that you guys have. And the second is sending out, um, as a, uh, not so retired architect mentioned. Uh, you know, getting the right type of people, structural engineers, people who understand that. Um, and then our next step would be getting, um, estimates, you know, roofing estimates, those. Yeah, those plans, that that is actually in there in a very, maybe not as detailed as it could have been, but it's there in terms of steps. And then the next step would be determining what needs to be done and then measuring those things. Because you're right, the, the preservation grants have limits, you know, but they have limits in terms of what you can do. There are certain restrictions in terms of what those funds can be actually used for, because they're they're not trying to throw money to a money. So I, I mean, I personally, and obviously it's the board's decision, I personally am in complete favor of any money that can go in. To help eliminate the self, the health and safety hazards that are there. Like the roofing, um, potentially mold issues and stabilization things. It's knobbing too, I'm not sure if y'all familiar with. Things like that, and the basic structural infrastructure can be restored. Uh, as well, so I I like the idea of putting money up, but I I'm. With certainly, I know that the organization, what what the organization wants.
The best thing you do with your money is some money, some planning money. I happen to be in favor of an architect to do that, because that's a plan, or the contractors more nuts and bolts. You need something to build from, but you've got to think in terms of, if you, if you have restored that second floor. And you put in those pews and all that, you're going to use it for a community center to talk, you know, have a presenter up there. You're going to have to have fifty people up there. You're going to have to have exit, you're going to have to have access to it. You have to have toilets. You're probably going to want to build some kind of a kitchen.
Sprinkle.
You've got to do all that thinking and do the programming first, then print that into, do your ass-built drawings. Of that place, then crank all these spaces in there and start seeing what it's going to look like. And then the contractor takes that, it looks at, now I can see what I've got to do. I've got some work here.
Well, I know, I understand what you're saying, Jim, but I still say there needs to be somebody, just like we have Charles, okay? Charles works with all the engineers, he works with the planning, he works with everybody, but he's in charge. And that's what I'm saying, is we need somebody, and if that's going to be Mr. Blue, that's going to be Mr. Blue. Then that's the one that I want to be able to call and say, Mr. Blue, tell me what's going on right now. And he's going to know. So I understand you need the, I I understand you need all of these different experts in there. But, but you need one person that's that's controlling this ship.
Well, and I I'm suggesting Mr. Blue hire a historic preservation architect or whatever.
Well, he can do that, but he's, but 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 Mr. Blue is going to be the one that they're going to come to. Do you understand what I'm talking about, Mr. Blue? Yes, sir. Go ahead, Jay, jump in, jump in, Jay, you've been trying. Jump in.
Oh, going back to Commissioner West, um, let's keep in mind what starts tomorrow. The first day of hurricane season. So we, you know. Right, so we, yeah, I I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of thinking about that, that, you know, getting that place. You know, getting something secured, because like, um, Commissioner DeVito said, we don't want to wait too late.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know we got homework to do, but, you know, let's just kind of keep that in mind that.
Can I jump in again to? I agree, we need a structural architect that's going to guide you and what your needs are and what your wants are for the community. But also, Jay, your father is a plumber, isn't he? Uh, I'm not suggesting that he's going to do the work over there, but he could guide.
Yeah.
And he could do it this way, do this, do that. And you could get people to work on that that you aren't actually paying. You see what I'm talking about, free labor? It it's worked in our lives, all our lives, you know, uh. Ronnie can help you with electrical, but he's not, he's only certified through the school system, not through the state, whatever. But he's too dang old to do all the work and the crawling at all, honestly. But somebody could, if somebody's there telling you what to do. And it's done right to state standards, because you're going to have inspectors come in. And you have state standards, but you've got somebody telling you this is what you not need to do to get it ready. And I think possibly throughout this community, there are enough people to help you do this in that capacity. So that if you can get hands to work on it. And you've got experts that can tell you what to do and how to do it, I think that can help you with part of your, uh, situation. Let's get it dried in first. Get a architect that's going to help you with what you need. And then you need to go after plumbing and electrical next.
Now, we supposed to be brainstorming this today, right?
We're just trying to talk it out and see where we're going to go. Yes, sir. This is a good opportunity to sit down.
To come up with action.
Right.
Okay, well, now somebody need to be writing down the action plan. We just talking.
Yes, sir, we're right. And not only that, Karen's got it. She's recording everything. Karen's recording everything.
Yeah, okay, well, we brainstorming ideas and then we want to sit down on paper, then we want to go with the action plan.
Right.
That's where we begin to show the movie.
And I, I, I think that, um.
I hear consist, I hear a consensus of getting the roof repaired.
Yes.
We've asked, we've asked the company to give us a price line, I'm just checking. We don't have a price yet, but we're working on it. Okay, so you guys, and then, um, that's fine, that that's great, because we'll have somebody come out there, we can compare notes. Are you guys looking at local, or does it, does that part matter to y'all? Um, it doesn't, we, we have, it's a local company to bid on some other jobs we had, so we. Oh, Putnam County, yes, okay.
It's a lot different than any that I worked in. You're going to have to have licensed contractors. So don't think about all this stuff where you're going to go out and somebody's going to start working on the.
I know, but she's trying to be, I understand.
And maybe we can help, maybe we can be the laborers and haul everything off and all that kind of stuff, but you're going to have to do it by the book.
And I think Mr. Blue, Mr. Blue knows that, he understands that. But, you know, there's other things that, like Judy was saying, where Ronnie and and different people, you know, Pastor Robert T can, you know. There, there's something for everybody. And, you know, a gentleman said something to me today, and this is a great opportunity. This is a great opportunity for our black community. Um, it really is. And I hope you all recognize that the commission is very supportive of this. Very, very supportive of this. And I'm excited about it. Of course, you know, I I I could see a restaurant, I've talked to you, Miss Pat, about, I could see everybody sitting out there in a restaurant. And y'all got, you know, we've got some wonderful cooks in this community, but that's okay, I will back off of it. Um.
It's the plan.
It's the plan. It's, it's, I I love that you're stepping up, that I think this is a great opportunity in our black community too, to step up. And I think once you start to see stuff, and Charles has made this comment to me several times. And, you know, when he's out there pulling weeds and, and it's one of those things, it's right in front of you, you know. Yeah, we want it to be a community center, absolutely. I I love the idea. We need something here. We don't have these services for not, for all demographics. It doesn't matter if you're, you know, if you're black, you're white, you're yellow, you're purple, it doesn't matter. We don't have that here in South Putnam. And I love that, but Charles says that, and I think that's something for us all to remember. What's right in front of us? What's right in front of us? And so that building, as we go forward, there's some of those things that we can start to do on the outside. And then that's right in front of you. And a gentleman said to me today, and I have a lot of respect for this gentleman. He said to me, you know, Michelle. Twenty-five years ago, some of us lost our way. We lost our way. And it's taken us a while to find our way back. And that hit me pretty hard when he said that, you know. And 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 y'all are giving them an opportunity, you're giving everybody an opportunity to take pride in this. And this to be part of that community and to start to rebuild. And you got to start somewhere. And if you build it, they will come. And I think if we can start down this path and you know, I think you can tell that all these commissioners have committed. Um, for the, to, to, to be behind you in this. I I see great things, I see great things that can happen, I really do. And, um, and thank all of you for just taking that initiative, for stepping up and taking that initiative. I mean, because not everybody's willing to do that. And this is a huge undertaking, a huge undertaking.
And it's not going to go all.
It's not. And and some of you might not like each other during the whole process, you know, and you might not like us and we might not like you. But at the end of the day, we're all committed to working together.
We all discuss it, so what is our first step now that we're doing, or we're saying that we're going, you're going to repair the roof?
Commission and vote on.
I'm working on getting the cost. Now, we talked about a preservation architect. If we do it, we have to put out an RFQ. And it takes several months.
Yeah.
Publish it.
We can, uh, we can, we can locate a couple, have some conversations with them. As you all know, it's a highly competitive market right now with the building boom, but, uh, we can communicate, uh, communicate with each other. I know, uh, I know a few architects that I can reach out to. Um, I'll be giving him a call as well, and we'll kind of collaborate on that. So I know the RFQ process and RFD may take a while, but, uh.
Well, begs the question, who's writing the check?
If we could, that that would really be the question, to be honest.
Because if we're writing the check, we'll have to do the RFQ process. If you guys are paying them, it'll be quicker.
Yeah, just, just a second. Yes, ma'am, hold on. Go ahead, finish up.
Yeah, I will, that that will be the point that I will get the, get into the financial, uh, commitment piece of it. I know you guys have to put it out, uh, bid and all of that good stuff. So, uh, I guess we would, um, have to kind of have you all to do that from a financial standpoint. I mean, we can assist in sharing, in in that case, in sharing the RFQ with some potential, um, vendors. And maybe that might expedite, maybe find a couple so you can have some to choose from.
The challenge is, we don't know their price until we pick one, and then we negotiate, and then we find out, wow. Well, if you can ballpark, that would be appreciated.
On a two hundred thousand dollar project, I would expect somewhere around eight percent. Two thousand dollars. He would bring with him a civil engineer, a structural engineer. And a mechanical electrical, where we started to cover all that stuff. So that's, it's a ballpark, but that's the start. Somewhere in that range. It's, it's a more complex project than just building a house.
Okay, Tracy.
Okay, I think that you go back to step one, which you overlooked. He's talked a lot about site control. I understand that, I've been contracting for a decade. Bobby says there's a lot of options. Bobby's step one. They're not, the city needs to make some kind of a deed with this group, with whatever restriction you want. They have to have control of the project. You cannot have commissioners stepping in worrying about safety here and that here. It has to be the city allowing them to do the work, to be able to, to get the bids to proceed forward. They've got a lot of ideas they're going to develop as they're eligible for grants, but they can't do that until. You guys decide to give them some kind of a deed with whatever restrictions you want, so they can be, they can score.
Well, we've got to, hold on just a second. And Bobby, that's something if you'll look at, so that we can have the options available to us. Knowing that some of us right now are not comfortable in handing over the deed, but we can definitely enter into some sort of a lease. Um, agreement or whatever you think that you might need if you want to work with Mr. Blue and talk to him about what he has seen. And you know what? Let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's talk to other people and see what they've done. Like, there's one over here that I saw, Zion Missionary Church, and I'm sure that they've done that, but they had a. Um, they had a huge, they got a huge grant. There was another one, Friends of Lincolnville Historic Building Restoration.
Saint Augustine.
Yes, yeah. And they got a million dollars for that. And so those are some, I mean, talk to some of those people too. I know you've already talked to some, and find out what does work, you know. Um, I I said that earlier, Tracy, thank you. I don't, we're not going to be, that's not what we do, we're not in this. But, but I'm not ready to give up. I'm not, I I don't, I'm not ready to necessarily give that up if we don't have to give that up at this. Just because you know what we went through, what we went through. Did you have something to say, Commissioner?
I did. Um, um, I agree, but I think it's premature to talk about deeding it. Because at this point, um, I mean, you have to have financial capacity, which we we're not quite there yet. Um, and Charles, Charles's recommendation was a lease. I think there's, I think there's an opportunity even for a partnership agreement. So I think we need to get something, um, in writing. I think we have a lot of good ideas. Um, but there's a variety of grants out there, and who needs to own what? Differs widely among the different brands.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think, I think Charles has made his recommendation, it's in his memo to us. I thought it was a good recommendation. And, you know, I think we all, we all have our strengths, we all have our job to do. Um, and I I hope we can leave here and start making some of these ideas happen.
Well, I think as we go forward, first step is, we're going to have to put that on the agenda. Do you think you can get a contractor, um, to to give you a price by? Yeah, okay, okay. So we'll do that.
One contractor gave us a price on a roof.
No, he's trying to get.
Well, we're working with two, but, uh, the one specifically that we selected for the other project, we passed them to go over there and get a price on it. And and Mr. Blue had mentioned they're working with people as well to compare prices.
Can I say this, Mary?
Yes.
Let me say this. I keep on hand, the vibes coming up. Now, what we, we got to understand, we're the city and we are not in the real estate business. So we need to try to do everything possible, everything possible to get this back in this organization name. We don't need to create a lot of problems. We got a lot of problems now we get, so we need to get rid of it. But we we want to make sure it's sound and it going to take off once we do get rid of it. So let's kind of be kind of easy on that. Keep on hand vibes. Hate to put it back, do this, do that. Then just don't, you just don't look at it that way.
Well, I I, and I apologize, because if I've said that, I've never wanted to put that out there. I just said that I just feel like, right now, I don't know that they're ready, because you've got insurance issues. And if we hand that over to you, we hand it over to you, you know. I mean, and and you've got a lot of issues that, that right now, that, um, I just don't know we're ready.
We're in a position of trying to build trust with one another.
Yeah.
We want to be able to trust you and you want to be able to trust us. And we, and and, and in order to do that, it, the trust that we need is that you're going to come through. it's, the trust that we need is that you're gonna come through for us. If we determine how we're gonna give you, what, what you need, do what you need to do. And, and for you, it's how are we gonna do it, and, and, and how can the city help us get your equipment?
Yeah.
It, it, it's kind of a trust issue right now going on, and, and, uh. So I think, uh, you know, I read through everything that Charles recommended. I think it is a good recommendation. I think it need to be a little more crisp and a little more clear as to the way that you would like to write this up, uh, so that we can work together, uh, the way that we need to. I don't know if you guys got a copy of that?
Did you all see my recommendation?
Yeah, so take, take a look, though. Take a look, and, yeah, and, and.
Here, you can have.
Yeah, you can have mine too. But really take a look at that, and, and, um, 'cause I think it, you know, I think it was done.
You have your comments. I've written, you know me, I write all over everything. I've written all over my coffee.
And, and, so, so, yeah. But, yeah, I think that's kinda where we're at right now, and, and Bobby, you need to come up with the great. Hey, this is how we're gonna do it, a lease, how long you it's gonna be.
I mean, I can bring options, I can.
Yes, thanks. No, you can bring, that's great, great options. That's what I said. Bring us options, bring us options that everybody is comfortable with. Um, you know, I think with everybody comfortable, I wanna start with, what are you gonna name it? I get right into it. I mean, let's, let's start talking about that too. I mean, that's, that's part of a vision, you know? You gotta have a vision, and, and what are you gonna name it? And see that, see that sign up there, you know, up at the top, and.
Why change it? Why change the name?
Here, here.
Why change?
Oh, New Moon. So you think you're gonna, I, I love New Moon Lodge. I mean, I love that too. I mean.
I've always liked that.
So, I mean, that's just why.
I have a say in it, but.
I just, that was just a curiosity. I mean, I just didn't see on there what, you know, so I, I'm.
Good for you, Karen.
Just wanting to know.
And we, we'll, we'll get together, 'cause we got to vote too.
Yeah, we have.
We have a board, so we have to decide, uh, what name.
What name?
That's a good recommendation.
And we have to make sure that it is, hey, that we can keep that name as well.
Oh, you think that might be a problem?
No, no, it's not a problem.
Ms. Pat spoke up, it's not a problem. How do y'all, um, okay, as we go forward, and we, I guess we're pretty much ready to wrap this up, and, and, how do y'all, how do you, how do you feel? How do you feel right now?
I'll let them respond, get the last word. I just had one question before you, you guys take it. I'm the, uh, the one thing that I would say is, I agree with Charles that the, some type of subsidy would be good. I, I think, um, Commissioner, uh, West mentioned that the ten thousand dollars would be a stretch for the city with all the other priorities. I mean, I, I would ask that you all, uh, consider, even if it's for a specified period of time, or even a smaller amount, to consider some type of oper, just a, a subsidy. I think it would do good in terms of, kinda helping launch some of the programs.
Okay.
Uh, that, uh, you know, that the organization has. And, you know, we're not a jack-of-all-trades, but there are certain things from, uh, just a community development, that we, that Crescent City just needs. And, uh, they've been working probably for the last several years, raising funds, and I think that, that would just be a, it would feel real good if, uh, the organization could receive some type of support, even if we say, okay, we'll start here. This is a type of impact reporting that the city would need to show how the money is being expended. But I, I would ask that if you all would kinda put that on the table as well as a part of something, to start at a specified period of time, and perhaps, if not, you know, it ongoing, but end at a specified point in time.
Okay.
Well, I, I would encourage you to consider, uh, like subsidy is the word that does trigger, you know, every group in town would say, what about us?
Right.
Even with a match, perhaps a matching.
That's my issue with it.
What you would consider is a contract for services. So you're gonna provide service to the city, that are enumerated, and we've entered a contract with you. I've been part of those with not only Main Streets, with Chambers of Commerce, even, uh, cities support Little League, because it provides recreational programs that a city can't afford to provide on their own. So a contract for service, um, it's not a subsidy, it's not a donation.
Sort of terminology kinda.
It's important, it's important, yeah.
Mayor, could I speak to that issue as well?
Sure.
Whether it's services or subsidy, um, I made a note about that. Crescent City is very small. The city will have fifteen hundred residents, and this center, I'm anticipating, would serve people from outside the city limit. My recommendation would be, I mean, the city of Crescent City at this point cannot provide services for the wider area. We, we cannot even, we have structural needs that we can't even meet, that get us in trouble with DEP. So, um, my suggestion would be that if funding funds are needed for certain services, there's the county, there's two other municipalities, and one, one or two other municipalities in South Putnam, and the county, and social organizations with grants. But I really don't think it's realistic for the budget of the city of Crescent City to provide an entire operating subsidy.
Not an entire, just.
No, it's like the amount that you show.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut y'all. I think, um, we're in agreement with that idea, 'cause you can't squeeze blood out of a turtle, that's what they told us.
Right.
But what I'm, what I would ask is, consider something for some point in time. And, uh, we, we're gonna knock on every single door, uh, that we can knock on, from the city to foundations, to Kmart, or Walmart, to, whether it's a fifteen hundred dollar grant, a five hundred dollar grant, to a, you know, a, a CED grant, that's a federal grant. So we're, we're with you, and we may be calling on you, Commissioner, uh, for some, uh, for some assistance, and, and each of you all to, to help us do that, whether it be through letters of support. We may be able to collaborate at some point on some, bringing some other additional funding into, uh, into the city as well, um, similar to what we do in Tampa, but we, we know, we wanna partner, uh, and just saying, we, I think we can do it collaboratively.
Okay, we're, we're tiny, y'all serve all of South Putnam, and we're just a tiny little part of South Putnam.
And we could, I mean, as part of that, as part of forward, um, you know, I mean, I don't mind reaching out and talking to the other mayors and our county commissioner, you know? And I know how close you are with, you know, Commissioner Pickens, and saying, listen, you know, this is important. And it is gonna serve all of us. What the concerned citizen is, you know, it's south of the Dunn's Creek Bridge. And so for everybody to be involved, um, but, but before we end this, huh? Okay, okay. Um, I just wanna make sure y'all are, y'all feel good about this?
Yes, and it's just, that's how I want to do it, so we love, that, those things. So, yeah.
Yeah.
This is representative of a lot of hard work. Please realize that, we realized that, right off the bat.
Oh, yeah, uh, well.
My expectation was just to really come in and have a conversation, brainstorm. Um, this is something that, uh, we always wanted to do, and, um, I believe that the timing is perfect, the timing is right. So we wanted to have the conversation. Um, one thing, this group is resilient. We're gonna work. We're gonna do our part. We've been doing it for, for a few years. So, um, you know, just having the conversation to me is the beginning of something great.
And I guess I just need some business cards to, uh, my share, to maybe share my information as well with, with everybody, so that.
Yeah, Ms. Pat, how do you, you're awful quiet.
What?
Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Oh, you sure? I mean, this is our, I know, this is our, this is what I wanna make sure. What are you thinking? You're, you're being awful quiet right now. And so, well, now I just wanna make sure. No, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that, if there's something, though, that you.
You know, I, I, everybody know me well enough, you know, that if I have something on my mind.
Okay.
Sometimes you get, you get a lot of information, and you have to digest it.
Okay.
Some digesting what has been said.
There is a grant that opens this fall, I think in September. It's for African-American historical and cultural assets. At least, it might be September.
There's, and there's little, even Microsoft has like a thirty-five hundred, I mean, all of that adds up, that Microsoft has a grant, you know? I mean, it's amazing when you start looking at all the grant opportunities, and it's kind of like women-based. Remember, women-based businesses, all the husbands put their wives on all the, the paperwork, because the women were eligible. And, um, you know, I mean, I was amazed when I started going through the grants that are for women and, um, you know, and for minorities. It's, um, there's a, there's a lot out there.
Can I say one last thing?
Yes.
It sounded very positive today, and I want this to go forward, and I want it to really work. And I think you, you've got a group that can make that work. You'll have a lot more people than what you got to. And you probably do, the new churches or whatever. I can't say for sure that, well, the commission's gonna vote, because I can't talk to everybody. I'm sitting right next to the lease, but I can't talk to her about it outside of these walls and the public. But there's a probably a good chance that we can go ahead and dry it in for you. And I really want to see you working on a structural, uh, plan, engineer or somebody. You're, you're first, as you're talking. I don't know what that cost. It doesn't sound cheap to me. To get, because you're going to need a plan, and, uh, when you have your plan, then what can we inform first? Do we need to do bathrooms or plumbing first? You know, electrical rather.
Right.
Uh, because those are your two big, big hits. They're gonna be big, and Jim's right. I've, I've always, we've always done, helped each other get things done, but this is a public place, and it has to be done the right, the right way. Not that it wouldn't be done with people that know what they're doing, but you, you're gonna have to contract, uh, everything, and that's gonna be costly too. So it won't be a year, it won't be two years. It's down the road.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a lot of hard work for you to get it done. We're here to support you while we can, and it's not just a bright thing.
It is not. That's what people have to realize.
Yeah.
That's, that's the key right there.
Well, and it's with the concerned citizens, and that's why, you know, earlier we said it's gonna serve everybody in the county and state, regardless of your demographics. And, um, and, you know, I think the biggest thing for everybody as we walk away is, is let's pray on it, 'cause, you know, I mean, it's amazing, you know, how many times that just, and I know there's some, some strong prayer, pray, prayers um, in the community, and, um, it's just amazing miracles.
Yeah, it's gonna work out. It's gonna be.
Yeah, I'm ready. Okay, so are we done? Is there anything more that?
I'll send emails with my, uh, with my information, and I try to be a little great. I just took a picture of it, but, uh, I'll, I'll make sure you have my information.
Okay. And with that, anybody else? You good?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Everybody's good? Okay. Thank you all for coming, and with that, we're going to adjourn this.
Thank you all.